To the meeting of the Lewisburg area board of school directors. You could please rise for the pledge of allegiance. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting. Two quick announcements to get started. The board is all, everybody is here, each board member. The majority of us are here in the room tonight, and we do have one board director joining us via Zoom. So everybody is here and accounted for. The board also met an executive session for approximately thirty minutes prior to this evening's meeting to discuss four confidential personnel items. We will move on now. I'll open the floor for any citizens comments to the board on agenda items. Are there any items that anybody would like to address this evening? John, any online?
Nope, no comments online. For anybody watching at home, if you would like to make a comment to the board, please visit our website at www.lasd.us. Scroll down to the school board link and click on the survey link and enter your name, your address, and your comment, which we read later on in the board meeting.
Thanks, John. Anybody here in the room? All right, we'll move on to board representatives' comments. Chris, I'll start with you.
I think our teachers have been working very hard in preparation for the end of the marking period. Getting report cards together, conferences, those kinds of things. Our math report card is going to look a little bit different this year with going to the Bridges program. And so we want to update that report card and share some information out with our parents. As Lynn Towns in a similar situation, Mr. Wetzel had shared with me some of the information he had drafted for his families, and I made a few modifications around Kelly. We're also planning to do a couple of question and answer sessions. It will be the week of conferences. We're going to do one for K one families and one for two and three families. And Shane Kishel, our title one math teacher, will do those on Zoom. So parents can come in, ask any questions they have about the Bridges program or about the report card. We'll also be sending some information home that families can find some more information about Bridges. Also, resources of things that they can use at home to help support their students with the new math program. So thanks to Mr. Kishel for hosting those question and answer sessions. I'm pleased to report we have a new member of our Kelly School, a Russian tortoise in Mrs. Jamison's classroom. You could probably fit four of them in your hand, really small. The Green Dragon Foundation funded this purchase along with a classroom habitat that can be used for years. I suggested we name the tortoise Shelley, but the kids have some other ideas, so we're still deciding on that. But anyway, that was, the kids were so excited today, they were just beside themselves. So they haven't even started any instructional units on, on the habitat. Also, today, Mrs. Barlett's students were able to take a quick field trip over to the high school to watch some of the Powderpuff football game, which I'm sure they'll talk about a little later on. But they have a senior service student, Riley Dyeroff, who works in their classroom, and all the kids wanted to go watch her play in the Powderpuff game. So they came over and lined along the fence. It just reminded me of how fortunate we are to have the buildings in such close proximity. I remember Paul and I used to talk about it when we were still building this. This building is just how nice it's going to be to have our kids be able to interact and do those things. And I'm sure that the students were excited after not having Powderpuff for a while, but I don't know if it'll be the same excitement that these kindergartners feel, because I'm sure they are ready to play in Powderpuff already. They're just gonna have to wait till 2030 till they come over. So anyway, lots of fun today. Paula, thanks for having our kids come on over and, and support Riley.
Thank you. I'm just kind of thinking back what Chris said with the new math series. It's a massive undertaking and to commend the Lynn Town staff as well with what they've taken on with that. It's, I'm sure there have been frustrations with parents. I know myself as a parent seeing what my daughter's bringing home. It's a total different way to approach some of these problems, but to see how it is catching on and picking up when you visit the classrooms and the stuff, the concepts the kids are getting to already. In fifth grade, looking at adding and subtracting fractions using money. When they see a fraction, they're converting it to money and solving it that way. Or using time and a clock, the clock face. And just, it's really teaching kids multiple strategies. Say in a, in a fourth grade classroom, they had a problem they were working on, and the teacher gave the problem out there, and then it was just work quietly for a couple of minutes and then turn to your partner and share strategies. And there were probably five different strategies kids used to solve the problem, and they all came to the same answer. And the one student was struggling at one point, couldn't figure out where he made an error. His partner was able to work through it pretty incredibly for a fourth grader, like without just giving the answer. He was probing him and getting him to figure out where the mistake was. So it's been awesome to see as it's been catching on and just the strategies they are using. It is getting there, so families be patient. It is working. I think it's an amazing program. Our teachers are very impressed with it. They've said how fun it is to teach math, and they've really enjoyed the approach of the series with having a math piece, but then there's also something called number corner that visits concepts in a different manner and really spirals it. So it's been a phenomenal thing, and we're really excited to see where that program takes us. Two other things that I wanted to share, because it's been a couple of weeks here since we've, we've been together. Stephanie let us know about CMSU had a grant opportunity where we were able to order things for a calm room, and they've been coming in in massive quantities to Lynn Town. And it's just, it was a really awesome opportunity. We had a pretty large budget. We were able to order things. And the prerequisite was we had to have it available for all students within the entire school. So it's been really exciting to see those things coming in as we're getting ready to prepare that room and just have that space for any student. We've seen, you know, everybody's reacting differently to the times we're going through, and then those behaviors come out in different ways, and stressors are different for everyone. So I think to have that space and different things within that space, just to provide a calm atmosphere, allow, allow you to regather your thoughts, regroup, and then get back when you're in a good spot to return to the classroom. We're excited to get that implemented. But it was a really awesome opportunity Stephanie shared with us, and we're very, very happy about that. And then the last thing I wanted to share, last week, Chris and I met virtually with Ellen Amarante from Bucknell. They are redoing the program that they, they go to a couple low-income neighborhoods within Lewisburg, and they provide after-school tutoring services. It used to be the Office of Civic Engagement. It's got turned over to the Education Department, and they've really revamped it. So we had a really productive conversation, working together with our thoughts, with her thoughts. And then she's followed up with us with the very detailed information, and she really wants it to be a collaborative approach with our staff, helping them with curriculum suggestions and even possibly coming out, supporting them and doing some of these visits with them to really make it as beneficial for the kids as possible. So it's really awesome to have that opportunity, and I think we have a lot of excitement with that. I think it's going to be a very positive thing for our students, so I'm very excited about that.
Thank you. Lots of things are happening at the middle school. It's all, all very positive. We have, we're at the end of the first marking period, so next week we'll have report cards ready to go out. Hard to believe, it feels like some ways like we just started. We'll have the end of the first market period. In fact, our last club day was today for the first marketing period, and we'll have a new whole round of clubs for people to sign up on Monday. And my first chance to use the Google Form, Form Ranger, to figure out how to make selections disappear when they're full on the form. So it was my first time doing it. Mrs. Sample had always done it in the past, stepping down from that, so I had to learn how to do it. And I'll highlight just a couple of clubs. We're bringing back the middle school minithon club that's run by Ms. Acker, and that partners with the high school minithon club, which supports the Four Diamonds, which is in support of research for pediatric cancer patients. We will have Ms. Sample, as long as I brought her up. One of the more exciting clubs that I've been able to witness, and that's a sign language club, where she's going to work with Mrs. Hack and teach kids how to, how to communicate via sign languages, which I think is outstanding. Another note, Mrs. Ulrich, Mr. Mowery, and Officer Shipman will be working with each grade level, each student over the next three weeks on some in-person anti-bullying instructions, some direct instruction, some things that had been missing that they hadn't had the time. They're making the time to do that, and they'll meet over the next three weeks with, with each student in small groups in an effort to bring that to those kids. We don't have any dances or anything, not till next week, but keep that on your calendar for Friday night next week. And it's just, there's, if I could, I would go on and on, but I'm going to pass it on to Mr. Popovich, or Popovich, sorry.
Thank you. In addition to clubs, we are going to start that process tomorrow for juniors and seniors to start signing up for some of these clubs. So being new to the district and consolidating all the clubs that are going to be available to students is very, very impressive. So just the variety of offerings that there are within the high school for students to sign up for is, is really impressive to see. And the opportunity for, you know, students to find different things that they might be interested in already or find things that they, you know, were unaware of that they decided to sign up for will be super, super cool, especially on Wednesday, because I'll be able to go to a couple of them and see things that I haven't been able to see either. And then one other thing that I want to mention is Broadway Bistro that happened a couple of weeks ago. That was a really impressive event, so that was the first time that I was able to see that. There was twenty students that were, twenty-two students that were involved in the production of that show. So there was twenty, you know, people that were able to perform throughout that, and then there was some behind the scenes with sound as well. And with that, it was just astounding to see the amount of work that they put in, because I know the amount of rehearsing that they had to do and put into that, you know, throughout the, the nights of practice. And I definitely want to recognize Mr. Walls and Mrs. Tye for their efforts in putting that event together. And I know there's definitely a lot of supports from parents and other groups to help make that show go off very, very well. So it was very enjoyable, and I definitely will go to that again in the future.
All right, I apologize for my voice. I'm gonna squeak my way through here. Just a couple of things are, Mr. Wagner took the FFA students on a field competition this week. The kids did great. They were so happy to be able to participate again. Impressively, the Lewisburg students finished in the top seven, took the top seven in all of the forestry components. And when you consider that we don't have a formalized ag program, this is strictly through his efforts in his classes, his regular environmental. That makes it even more impressive. Last Saturday was alumni weekend. I had the opportunity to give a tour to some of our alum. Unfortunately, they had pretty small numbers, but it is always just such a pleasure and a treat to be able to take former graduates on a tour of this building if they haven't been in here yet and be able to tell all of the different things. You know, they certainly reminisce about the old building, but then when we talk about, you know, again, I think what was really the, the very conscientious point that we made when we built the high school is we weren't going to have this great big new building to say we have a great new building. It's what are we going to do to enhance the learning experiences? What are we going to offer that we couldn't previously? So as we were walking down in Mr. Totwiler's area, and we were talking about how, you know, the, the kids have worked with Kelly Kids and the toy project that benefits Geisinger and the hospitals. You know, they were blown away by that, blown away by what there are in our science rooms, how there's a dedicated space, no matter what your passion is. And I think over the last, you know, however many months, it's been, it's been easy to kind of put that secondary, because we're focused so much on getting through the right now. But then to see other people come in and be like, wow, this is amazing how you're doing this, and you're doing this. And to be able to have our kids in person, to be able to be doing these things, it's not something to take for granted or to take lightly, the impact that we're having on our kids. And that was just, you know, I think a really great reminder of all of the good things that are happening. Finally, as Mr. Merrill had mentioned, it is homecoming week. One of the things that the students are so looking forward to, the class videos are back. So normally, we have a large assembly with a student body. That'll, of course, be broken into smaller chunks, but we still want to do the viewing in the auditorium on the big screen with the sound with the two-hour delays scheduled, or the, I'm sorry, early dismissal schedule. We had to be really creative about our schedule. Group of our teachers on the leadership team developed, you know, a special schedule tomorrow that includes grade-level activities specific that they might need. So for instance, the ninth and tenth, it might be going over again all the features and clever, making sure that every single kid, yes, you are logging on and know how to get into your email with our twelfth graders, the college application project, process, and some different questions there that have come up. And then there's a collaborative art project that each grade will be participating in. And I would really like to give a shout out to Mrs. Crete for coordinating that and for making forty individual advisory kits for that to be able to take place tomorrow. Thank you.
So tomorrow is our in-service day, and we will be taking that time to work with our special education teachers in our professional learning for K through six teachers. We're going to be looking at our delivery of services, our continuum of services, and developing a plan of what we want to have special education look like moving forward in Lewisburg. We'll be working all together as administration team with Dr. Polanczek and Mrs. Moser to work with our K through six teachers on that. And then for seven through twelve teachers, we're going to divide them up into a different in-service, focusing on our indicator thirteen and working on our transition goals in regards to our compliance. How do we, how does that look? What are our career services? What are our resources in our community? What career assessments that we need to take place? What level, like Sun Tech, Work Foundations? Where can we utilize and help our students get those career opportunities? And Misty Harris from the CSI U is going to be coming over. We're going to do our back-to-basics training with them on that. Additionally, I've been working on a newsletter for our special education families. That newsletter is going to come out quarterly. We're going to be highlighting our supports and what our plans are and what those areas of support look like in an IEP, and also delivering resources to our, our families. What's out there in the community? How can they be advocates for their own students? There's a lot of things with Patan, the CSI U, that they can really get involved in. So looking at those resources, that should be coming to their inboxes early next week, finalizing and pushing that out through email. And then finally, I would just like to thank all of our families, players, coaches, community partners, administrators for their continued support and understanding as we have worked through to reschedule events in all the weather and different things that have happened this fall. It's felt really great how things, people are pulled together, and I think we're all good to go. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. All right, we'll move on to our select presentation section of the meeting. The item tonight is the sick leave bank report. Dr. Fairchild?
Yep, all right. So you can see the sick leave bank report there. It's in the public section. But just a quick summary there, we had a little bit of enrollment. We had a couple of applications. Some days that were not used were returned, and so we still have a healthy balance in our sick leave bank, so there you have it.
Any questions? All right. We'll move on to the board action under Old Business. The first item is the contract with McClure. Dr. Fairchild?
Yes, this is the contract related to the HVAC modernization that we've been talking about at length here for quite some time. So we would ask that you approve this this evening, and McClure is ready to rock and roll.
Decades, I believe. Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, and seconded by Mrs. Clark. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the next item under Old Business is a 2021-22 school year superintendent and assistant superintendent goals. We have them before us this evening. I would entertain a motion to approve the superintendent and assistant superintendent goals as presented. Moved by Ms. Stanton, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And just a reminder for the community who's watching, these goals are part of the superintendent and assistant superintendent's evaluations at the end of the year, and that is posted on the, on the school website, the district website, whether or not they met them. So that is, that's why we approve them, because it is part of their evaluations. We'll move on to board action under New Business. The first item is a student tuition waiver. Dr. Polanczek?
So this is a senior exemption. The student, his family is moving actually out of the area. The student is currently an A student, so she would be taking her instruction remotely, but would like to graduate with a Lewisburg area high school diploma. Hopefully, family returns back for graduation, so we support this request from the parents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by Mrs. Brows. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yeah.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the next item is the family ID subscription. Ms. Beaver?
So the family ID is going to allow us to streamline our registration process for sports. It is an online system. Parents can actually do it from the phone. And as a parent who is always on the go, I love that I could just sit at a sporting event and fill out all the information. What's really great about this, I had a training yesterday on it, is that once you do it once, your kid's always in there, so you're not going to have to plug in your name and address and emergency context, and, and it's not and it's not the ten-page SIBP packet. So it's actually the SIBP packet already built in there by PIA double A. We're going to be able to run eligibility list. Mr. Popovich had also been looking at family ID, so I'm grateful for his help in coordinating and getting that. But I am really looking forward to this, so hopefully, and we can roll it out next week, so I'm ready to roll with it.
So moved by Dr. Jablonsky, seconded by everybody. Mrs. Clark, any discussion?
Is there any part of this that talks to the thing that the nurses do, which is that database about like the medications and stuff? This came up a while back.
So there is a component where we're talked to Power School, which we already have as a district. And there's, I've talked to Dr. Fairchild, and we talked about using it also to pay fees online, because that's also part of that athletic component. So I think as we start to learn what it all can do for us, it's nice that winter sports is, there's so few of them that we can actually pilot and see how that's going to work. And then when spring kind of gets back in, and we have that large sports and outside events going on again, I think, I think it could, like, definitely connect there with all that.
Any other questions for discussion? Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
The next item is the Bucknell University Facility Use Agreement for the graduation ceremony.
So in discussion with Mrs. Beaver, we really, we looked at and reviewed how our graduation went last year, and it was a very professionally done ceremony. And it's available for us to be able to use again this year. It would lock the graduation date into May twenty-fifth, which is good for people's planning. It's the Wednesday before the last day of school. What this would enable us to do is to, barring anything from COVID, we wouldn't have the restrictions on how many family guests can come. We can professionally stream the video for a graduation for any of family members that are not in the area. We certainly, just the audio visual, it's hard to explain if you weren't there, but as students are walking across the stage, there's their portrait, because they're so far away not to be able to see them, but it was just, it was an excellent space. And, you know, certainly something we would like to do wherever we can have things at the high school. Of course, we would look to do that. And as Paula keeps coming up with all kinds of ideas to keep people engaged, there may still be something that we could do here at the high school to help them to use our spaces, but to, you know, and also celebrate our graduates as they're going. But this, it's not just for them, it's also for their families, and we want to make sure that they have a comfortable space to mark that very important part in their lives, as well as their children's lives.
Is there a motion to approve the contract? Moved by Mrs. Brows, seconded by Ms. Stanton. Any discussion?
So from my understanding, is there, what is it that we can do there that we can't do here? Is it just the fact that the?
You can see your kid graduate, which is really hard to do in the gym, the way that it's set up, and it's really crowded. So that means for my advantage, that's like the biggest benefit.
And, and while we can stream and we have audio/video capabilities, they're not at that professional level. So people that can't be there would be able to still see the graduation ceremony. We'd also, I think it was really touching when the kids are walking across the stage as well. From a practical standpoint, it's a lot of work also on our facilities crew who want to jump right into summer cleaning and some of their projects. So with having that space not used, they can go ahead and, you know, start doing some of the things and staging some of the things that they need to do to get popping for their summer work. Paula, I don't know if there's something else.
We actually, like, when you look at the cost, when you look at, like, we get the stage from Williamsport. We get additional chairs that when we look at the cost, it, like, the, the cost for Bucknell compared to what we were already paying, but having the increased capacity, the audiovisual. As Jen said, you know, when we have it here, that means our maintenance has to put all the carpet square down first before they can put any of the chairs down. It displaces our physical education classes. And if it rains, where do you put them? Just the ease of having the students go to Bucknell instead of trying to do rehearsal in the gym while, while school's going on. I've experienced it both ways, when we've had it at the Y Center and when we've had it here. And of course, with Soika last year, every year, no matter what we have here for attendance, we get a request for ten times that number of, of tickets. So I'd also, like Jen had mentioned, point out just the strain that it puts on our custodials and our secretarial staff.
So do you have any idea what that cost is? Because that's primarily the reason I asked. I mean, graduation last year, it was a great venue. I don't have anything negative to say. I'm just, just interested in the money.
So do you mean from the cost from?
Yeah, like, I didn't realize we rented the stage that they used here.
Yeah, it was, it was easily, we were probably eighteen hundred, like, probably two thousand.
So that's roughly, based on what I saw here, that's roughly what they have built into their contract.
Right.
I don't know how many.
Bucknell's contract, there's a fifteen hundred dollar facility, and then we do pay extra for. Bucknell's contract, there's a $1,500 facility, and then we do pay extra for their maintenance. They also provide the security, which has been, I think, you know, that's always nice to be able to have that additional layer. They take care of the parking, which, you know, as you know, if we, as we've tried to park here. So I, it really, if you broke it down, dollar for dollar, that really is a better deal.
So it would be fair to say that this isn't actually an additional expense that we wouldn't have ordinarily paid if we had it on site?
No.
I just have two questions. One, do we know what the students want or parents? Have we, have we done any type of survey or anything to see?
We have another current class, but I will say that last year, including from the, the graduates, they were very pleased to be able, you know, again, just to have the, I think, like where you could see everybody, having it streamed, we can certainly do that with officers and with the class. That wouldn't, I mean, I could, you know, we, we can do that. I don't anticipate.
The only reason I bring that up is just like, you know, the big L that's out here in the hallway. I mean, that's usually a great photo. And I mean, just even throwing the hats up in the hallway, I mean, there, there's been really cool photos taken that you can't really replicate offsite.
I mean, they've done the pictures of the L and the mural, the class mural, that's another place. A lot of the students did that the day that we did the senior walk and things. They did do the, the caps when they were out in the lawn. Interestingly, before we moved in here, they never threw their caps at Lewisburg, you know, for however long, because, you know, they, yeah, yeah, exactly. Limited space. I can certainly, I understand what you're saying about.
I mean, that's just my only, I don't want to do, make a decision for us sitting here in the room that, you know, students don't necessarily want. I'm not saying that they don't. I just, I, I think that's an important piece that I would feel more comfortable making the decision if I knew that, you know, that the student and, you know, parents in the community kind of wanted that from us. I, I don't know how everyone else feels, but that, then my second, I guess, just little bit of apprehension. I got a lot of phone calls. I'm trying to think what the date was when the governor, Department of Health, whoever, released some of the mitigation limits on capacities and everything. And I, I mean, like 15 minutes later, my phone started ringing. Does that mean we're getting more tickets? And, and Bucknell still kind of limited that for us last year. Completely out of our control, which was fine. We were appreciative of their space. My concern is, you know, we're still kind of at the mercy of Bucknell. If we wanted to give, you know, each family one additional ticket or two, you know, that, that's my only, I got a lot of phone calls that day and the week, you know, the week after, just begging and pleading, you know, can we have more tickets? So.
So one, I would respond that no matter where we have held it in the past, the phone calls and the waitlist for tickets is, has always, you know, been something, and people bartering them in, you know, practically the back alleys in years past. Last year's was especially limiting because of the restrictions. Certainly not having our own outside facility that is able to house such an event is always going to limit us compared to what other districts have been able to do, because as much as I hate this word, we can't just pivot and do something outside with that. Last year's two tickets, of course, was extremely limited based on, you know, what we were mandated and held to Bucknell's standards. I do not see, at this point, I, I, again, I can't guarantee it because I'm not Bucknell. But I, I, you know, where things are now, I certainly wouldn't see where that's limited. And again, when you take this and compare it to our gym, we're still looking at, you know, overall capacity of being much greater than what we would have here.
Right. And again, I'm not arguing against, I just, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not, again, in a position where, you know, we're, we're limited by, you know, having it offsite to two tickets again, where we might be able to, you know, flex on that to three tickets or four, or whatever it might be in, you know, in our facility. So that's, there's just a little apprehension on my part there. But nobody can predict that, you know, for next May, so.
All I can say, as I know a lot of you have had, the, the pleasure of interacting with Gina Stockdale and Meredith Spangler, who works with her. And, you know, they truly bend over backwards so much for, you know, I'm sure for other groups too. But what they have done for us, whether it's with us trying to reschedule football games or with graduation or whatever our needs are, they've done great. I can certainly survey the students on, you know, their choice. I'd also like to, you know, just say that, you know, in the future, I'm happy if, you know, you give any questions to Dr. Polichuk beforehand, because I easily could have done this and had those tonight here for you. So, you know, again, if there's anything in the future that you think there might be more discussion or you'd like more information on, please relay that to Dr. Polichuk. And probably, you know, like I said, in this case, I really could have had a lot of those answers probably for you, at least as a student body was concerned.
And that just, I actually sent Janet text today, just kind of getting some more background. I didn't, it didn't occur to me until I was like, well, wait, did we, so anyway, that's, and I, is, is there a time limit on this?
Well, no, but I think the sooner that we can get it, I don't know.
I'm looking at the cancellation, and if we cancel 90 days prior, and it looks like what the fee is, is just the $1,500 fee, because we would, wouldn't have the hourly fee for all the workers provided by Bucknell. We would still be required to pay 25% of that if we canceled the fee. We didn't execute. And the other thing is, we're not executing this contract tonight. Where if the board approves it, the day we execute it would be the day that Mr. Fetter signs it. So we have that opportunity to maybe break out the costs a little bit more. John can certainly be able to go back and pull up what all the graduation costs are associated with. They're, they're not called out separately because they're part of the high school's operating budget. So that we wouldn't have that without really looking at it for specifically just that information, an opportunity to conduct that survey. It's also, I would say that that cancellation, if for some reason Bucknell were to go into a direction where they were going to limit attendance or capacity in any of their events, absent some sort of order to do so, and this is just something they choose to do, we would still, within 90 days, have that opportunity to say, okay, do we want to do that there? Or do we want to take it back and do it here at the high school? Because, you know, it might be the same thing. So we have that option. I, I mean, as far as we, we know, athletics and everything like that for colleges are going as normal without any kind of capacity limits outside of what their code, you know, fire code says you can do for capacity. So I, I don't think we anticipate Bucknell laying, layering on something extra, but there, there is an escape if we need to.
And likewise, it would still, you know, I'm still planning on the cost being paid for from the high school budget.
And just anecdotally, I mean, the feedback last year, I was, from my vantage point, being a parent and hearing people afterwards, it was just, it was all really positive. So I didn't know if.
Yes, absolutely.
Wow, Mr. Wetzel, like I thought was sort of.
Yep.
Yeah. And even the kids that came to watch their friends were like, this is so cool. So it just, it was nice to, but I, I fully appreciate the sentiment behind wanting to check.
I'd like, so I just had to ask, because I just, you know, sometimes we make decisions that we think are going to be really good. And I mean, it just, sometimes we're not the ones graduating. So I just want to make sure that.
Can we move Y Center to here? It was, I'm like, I can't believe we're at the Y Center. So any, you know, like, anytime.
And there's going to be pros and cons for each. I just, like I said, I, I just want to make sure that we weren't, as a board, making decisions that, you know, not that I am doubting your, you know, bringing it to us. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, my due diligence to ask, so. Any other discussion? So we have a motion, a second. Paula, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fisera?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. That concludes our board action. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead of myself.
Don't skip this.
Go ahead, John.
Yes. So I would ask the board to approve a transfer of 2.5 million from the general fund from 2020, 2021 to the capital projects fund. The dust has settled with our audit. The auditors are going through some final things. But this is the final remainder, as I made my presentation, I think a couple meetings ago, about using the ESER and the CARES money for this sort of thing. So I would ask that you approve this this evening. We'll make it happen, and we can put these funds towards our HVAC modernization, among others.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion?
Just to put it in some context, I don't know how much we yield on the 8 million bond, but let's say it's like 7.8 million, and you have this 2.5. So we'll have like a cushion of approximately 350 to 400 for the whole project. Essentially, is that what the plan is?
Yes, we can, we can use this actually. And when we're done with this, I do have some information on the bonds. They were just sold today. So I can update you on that. But yes, right now, our capital balance is about 2 million. So this will put us at 4.5 million. And then we add in the 8 million from the bond proceeds, and we will have enough to do the project. Also front the money until we're reimbursed through the ESER, the ARP ESER funds. And we'll still have a little bit left over, a couple million here or there, just in case something else goes wrong.
Right. No, we talked about not going below our current comfort level with the capital, which is like 2 million-ish. Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. So yes, we are good there. Yep.
Any other discussion? Paula, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fisera?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, move on now. Sorry, I got ahead of myself before. We'll move on to the board information. Tonight, the president's report is just very short. Just wanted to thank Stephanie for taking the time. I met her at the girls' soccer game the other night, just had a conversation. Two years ago, I had the opportunity to sit down with all of the building level administrators, just to, you know, kind of have a one-on-one chat with all of them, with Stephanie and Josh, being new to the district, as an opportunity to just get to know Stephanie a little bit and just have a chat about district and athletics and just everything. So I appreciate that, Stephanie. And it was great to get out to the soccer game as well. So Josh, I look forward to sitting down with you as well and having that same chat and maybe revisiting with all of you guys as well, because it's been a couple of years. And of course, COVID kept us all out of the buildings for a while. So, but anyway, just always nice to continue to build that relationship, you know, from, from the board with all of you and just sitting down and chatting for a little bit, very informally, of course. I will turn over to Dr. Polichuk for the superintendent's report.
So just a reminder that we have a half day tomorrow. Secondary students will be dismissed at 10:30 and elementary at 11:30. This will be for professional development. Students will have a bag lunch with them that they'll have in their school bags and ready to consume once they get home. Certainly, I would have a thank you that will be coming soon to the Green Dragon Foundation, Walmart and Y for their continued support and generous donations to the district. This truly helps us to augment some of the programs that we otherwise wouldn't be able to fund. And that's just certainly always going to be good for our kids. We're looking forward to a lot of the activities that are resuming, and it's been an opportunity for me. It's hard to get to absolutely every one of them all the time with just other schedule conflicts. But things like the homecoming game and the dance and knowing clubs are going to be starting back up and concerts. We, you know, we, we're still thoughtful and mindful of the fact that these activities are happening in school. And so there's some responsibility that we have with that. But it's good to see those normal things resuming. The kids so need that to make those connections and be able to socialize. And we always endeavor to make sure that we're doing that safely. And certainly so much thanks to our PSA and their parent volunteers for helping to make that happen. It's also good to be working on curriculum and program. Last year was a lot of, you know, just trying to manage controlled chaos, trying to get through the school year. And this year, we're really starting to, Kathy Moser and I work with teachers and program and start to continue with our curriculum initiatives. We have the math series rolling out this year. And very appreciative of all the efforts the teachers have in doing that. They oftentimes feel a little bit overwhelmed, but that's their only feeling that way, because they want to give their absolute best to the students. And we're looking forward to looking at the secondary math and also our K to 12 science. So those will be some bigger initiatives in the curricular area for this year. And that's it.
Thank you. We'll move on to board liaison committee reports. Was there anything anybody would like?
Same here.
Policy committee met, and we continue to, under Dr. Polichuk's able leadership, very quickly through a lot of policies.
Alumni Association is having a, an electronics recycling fundraiser this Saturday. So there's more information on their Facebook page, and it's Buffalo Road, I believe. I'm blanking on the address. Is that right? See, head shaking. Yes, that's right. So anyway, if you have any. I know there's, I wasn't at the meeting, because we had our meeting, but I, I believe they are not having it in the fall, but planning it in the spring, I believe. I'll check, double check to be sure, but I believe that was the last that I had heard. Any other liaison reports or committee reports? All right, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Brows, seconded by Dr. Jablonski. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Ms. Stanton?
All but minutes from the last board meeting since I wasn't here.
Dr. Unziger Fisera?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brows?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
All but the minutes from the last meeting, because I wasn't here, yes.
Motion carried.
All right. And then in closing, director's comments. Mary Ann, I'll start with you.
I'm so excited that the kids crossed over to watch powder puffing. I just think they're great. And I'm also with sort of thinking something in my head about the new math, because I think often parents are the ones who are most intimidated, because we learned it a certain way, and that's how we know it. And then we feel super helpless, and we don't know how to help them. So it's really, when you said the piece about money and fraction, that was actually how my father taught me in practice, because I really struggled with it almost all. So it's really great to hear that we're continuing to be really creative and thoughtful about trying to make math accessible and easier for everybody, because it's just one of those things. And just continue to be really grateful for all the things that you're all doing at your schools and keeping things fun and exciting and normal for our kids. So thank you so much.
The HVAC news is really exciting. I had a couple of kids sitting around me at the gym talking about school board finances. Conversation, I know, surreal. They were asking me like, is air conditioning happening? Well, children see interest rates. When the conversation ended with just saying, yeah, you're getting air conditioning. It looks like an actual cheers. So that's exciting.
I'll talk to those kindergartners.
I think they were eight years old.
Thanks, as always, to the Green Dragon Foundation and also Y and Walmart for their generosity. And, you know, I just, in listening to your remarks, there were multiple mentions of some of the great community partnerships that we have, the, you know, hearing about what's going on with the education department at Bucknell and the partnerships, definitely, that you're suggesting for families in the community, right? It's just, we live in a really wonderful community, and it's nice that there are these great resources. And, right, a lot of them are already, there, there are already these partnerships, but it's exciting to think about doing even more with those community resources that we have. Also want to thank the Green Dragon Foundation and Walmart and Y. Their very generous donations really. I also wanna thank the Green Dragon Foundation and Walmart and Wise, um, their very generous donations really helped move the district forward. Um, just wanted to comment on the Calm Room at Lindtown, I just think that's a fantastic idea, and I can't wait to hear more about it as it gets developed. Um, the FFA competition, I think that's fantastic, how well they did, kudos to them. Um, yay for Homecoming Week and all the activities that are happening, um, and, um, loud roaring applause for Family ID.
Mary?
Oh, I don't know what everybody else has said, but I, I feel we are so fortunate as a district, both as staff members, uh, board members, anybody involved in the district to have such an active group in the Green Dragon Foundation and Alumni Association. Uh, Bob Rouse has done an extremely good job in getting that across to all the alumni. And, uh, I just like to thank for all the donations that have taken place in this district. And I like to see all the great things that are going in your buildings, and my hat's off to staff and you administrators, you do a great job, we appreciate it.
I don't know what I'd add.
Ditto Mary, how's that?
John?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you to Green Dragon, Wise, and Walmart, um, just a quick update on the debt. Uh, today, our debt went up for sale on Wall Street. Um, I was a little concerned with the Fed's open market, uh, meeting minutes yesterday being published, and they're talking about tapering sooner than expected in November. The good news is, however, that our sale went even better than expected, um, on Three Friends. Originally, we had considerably estimated that we'd be saving about three million dollars over the next eighteen years on our bonds. We're actually going to be saving almost five million.
Five.
Um, so we're, we're saving, uh, four point nine million in interest over the next eighteen years. Um, and we actually sold the bonds, uh, for less principal than what we had before. So we were originally, it's this thing called, um, origin, uh, origin over premium or discount or something, anyway, finance stuff. The, the bottom line is, we were going to refinance twenty-eight million dollars worth of principal on the original bonds. We actually only had to issue twenty-five million dollars worth of principal on the bonds. And to get our eight million dollars for the renovations, we only had to issue seven million, five hundred ninety thousand dollars worth of bond principal. So we actually got more for our money this time around, because of our good credit rating, and because people were willing to pay a premium for Lewisburg bonds. So all of that put together, previously, we had thought that the average increase, uh, to the debt service would be around a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Um, it's actually about half, uh, the debt service is only going to go up by about ninety thousand dollars per year for the next eighteen to twenty years, so, um, all around a very good day on the stock market, uh, for the Lewisburg bonds, so. Partners, PFM, Piper Sandler, and the other folks that helped make that happen.
That's a great description, but I think we could get Mr. Creaker and Mr. West's stock market kids in here to maybe describe it.
They could, they could probably do it way better than me.
I'm just joking, thank you, John, thanks for the great news, Erin, I'll come back to you.
I'm, I'm sure, I'm just so excited about that, I had to write it down, um. I forgot what I was going to say, but I, I am happy to hear about the tortoise. Um, I remember when we had a little competition museum to name the turtles, and kids had all kinds of ideas. I remember one thing that was bubbles, and I, I don't know that there was a winner, but the other one, there were two turtles. So I hope that you report next time, there's a really creative name for that little tortoise.
I can promise you there will be.
Um, I hear a lot about Lindtown and the middle school, because that's where my kids are, although, interestingly, I had not heard about the dance, and I wonder if that's because someone doesn't want me to chaperone this time.
I think there's some planning still going on, whether to make it a more dance, dance, and. The last one was a fun night.
Dancing at the previous dance.
The thing about having seventh and eighth graders do that, and then bring sixth graders in for their first real dance on another day.
Oh.
That, that could be it, I'm not a hundred percent sure, he might not want to.
Um, I'm, I'm always happy to hear about, uh, stuff that's going on at the high school, and I am excited about them winning the forestry prize. I, I mean, I've seen a couple of times, and I've judged competitions and local things, and our students have participated, I'm always impressed, they present really well. That's one thing, I think our students get amazing communication skills, so I'm really happy to hear that they're going out and doing competitions again. And I am always a fan, anytime we move from, uh, triplicate and quadruplets of paper forms to anything that travels with the child in, like, digitally, that's amazing, so thank you.
That was a big win.
And I'm, I think the newsletter is also a great idea, I think that's just, communication always helps.
Corey? I, I think we've been talking about eliminating forms almost as long as we've been talking about air conditioning. Those are both great things.
You know, next time, we have to buy a van and a ship.
I, I can't think of anything to add that hasn't already been mentioned, other than, I just wanted to say that I'm glad to hear Chris is finally coming out of his shell.
Jen, anything, Dan?
Well, certainly, you know, thank you, John, for really watching with, um, you know, the finances, it's auspicious timing. It's kind of weird to sign a contract to spend so much, but then to have that happy news that, in the end, if we didn't begin this, we might have been encumbered with debt that we wouldn't have otherwise known to be able to make that change, so that's, that's a real benefit for the district. And I think it demonstrates our, the teamwork that we all have to get the best services and products for our kids, but also to be fiscally minded when we're doing that as well. Um, thank you to all the administrators, many of them here are in some stage of some cold or some kind of thing like that going on, and not all feeling very well, but here tonight. And even, you know, honestly, guys, like, even as you're working or you're home, you know, still checking in with email, you're not just kicking it up on Netflix, you're still staying connected, it's too hard to be out for a couple of days without really, you know, losing touch with everything and then being bombarded when you come back, so it's, you never really have a sick day. Um, and I don't, I don't know that the community completely appreciates that, they're always connected to the school and the things that are happening there, and the people that need their support or advice. Um, you know, our teachers are feeling, you know, certainly a lot of the pressure that, um, you tend to feel and the exhaustion that comes about around March, um, and we're feeling that kind of now, and we're, we're hoping that, um, things start to get a little bit brighter, but they are marshaling on, and they're doing the best that they can for our kids, and we're gonna look for any and all ways we can to support them and to move things off the plates, um, maybe not completely take, but at least move so that, you know, they're able to focus in on the kids and their own health and wellbeing and their families.
Uh, just last thing, um, there's obviously a lot still going on, which is fantastic, um, that, you know, we're kind of slowly getting back more and more to normal and resuming activities that might have been skipped last year. So, um, just great to hear, and, um, you know, in a small district like ours, uh, whether it's central office, whether it's building level administration, uh, you know, everybody in our district, uh, we, you know, wear a lot of different hats. And I talked to an administrator from a different district today, and he joked, and he said, but sometimes it's hard to get one hat off before the other hat has to go back on, and I thought that was a, you know, great comparison, because you guys all do so many different jobs, and, you know, that's what we have to do in a small district to try to keep, keep us going. Um, so thank you all for all the work, um, again, all of our staff, uh, faculty and staff. Um, it's just, it continues to be a good year, and, and I know it, um, certainly is still, now I'm getting tongue-tied, certainly still some challenges, but, uh, as we work through those, it's just great to hear all of the reports and all the things going on, so, thank you. Uh, we'll, we'll move on to any citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items, John, do we have any online?
Uh, we'll take a look here, uh, nope, none online.
Anybody here in the room? All right, hearing none, now entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by Mrs., what's that? Oh, sorry. By Mrs. Brows, seconded by Dr. Jablonski, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.